Good evening, everyone. Today is Wednesday, April 29th at 6:00 PM. And in the absence of the supervisor who has chosen to recuse herself, I will call this special meeting to order. At this time, it will be necessary for the board to appoint a chair for the meeting tonight. Ms. Posey, this is Kathy Smith. I would make that motion to appoint you to be the chair for tonight's meeting.
Motion by trustee Smith to appoint Clerk Posey to chair the meeting this evening.
Support.
By Nancy.
Supported by Nancy Nevers. I'll call the roll call vote. Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Bucino?
No.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. Supervisor Dunn is recused. That motion carried. I will now recite the Pledge of Allegiance on behalf of the Board. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I will move on to a roll call vote for attendance. Trustee Bucino?
Here.
Trustee Nevers?
Present.
Trustee Oliver?
Here.
Trustee Smith?
Here.
Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, here. And Ms. Dunn has recused herself. Okay, next I'll move on to the approval of the agenda with the addition of public comments on the agenda as item number four. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections?
And you also need to have public comment at the end of the meeting.
That would be item number four.
Well, no, there's two public comments. There's a public comment on the agenda items only, and then you will go into the hearing, and then there's after the hearing is completed, there's a public comment at the end of the meeting. I just wanted to make sure it's clear there are a few places, but you need to make sure this first public comment is on the agenda items only.
Okay. So with the addition of public comments on agenda items only, and also a public comment after item number three. May I ask a question? I thought there were supposed to not be any public comments at all at this hearing.
No, there are public comments by law on the agenda items. They can talk about the agenda items, and there's a public comment at the end. They can talk about anything in the world, but they are not going to be having public comment during the hearing, the Louder Mill hearing. That's correct. There will not be any public comment during that process.
I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda. Madam Chair, this is trustee Smith. I make the motion to approve the agenda with the added comments at the beginning and end of the meeting. Motion by trustee Smith.
Madam Chair, Charlie Oliver, yes, on that, I second it.
Supported by trustee Oliver to approve the agenda with the addition of public comments. Trustee Bucino?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
And Clerk Posey, yes. Now that we've approved the agenda, I would like to open up the floor for public comments on agenda items only. Again, I'd like to remind anybody in the public body that wishes to speak, you can raise your hand through the computer, and our IT technology group will refer to you and/or you can press star nine from your phone. So we will open up public comments at this time on agenda items only.
Frank Cusmano, you can speak.
Okay, I didn't have my mute off. It wasn't even an option before. This is Frank Cusmano, 16188 Jenny Drive. I want to congratulate the board on putting public comments on the agenda. It means that there won't be a violation of the Open Meetings Act, and it's required under Section 55 of the Open Meetings Act. I just want to make public comment about my interactions with Mr. Assorti as a member of the public. I found him to be abusive and confrontational, not only to myself, but also to my wife, when I had indicated by text message, because I was at another board meeting in the Compton Community College. And he acted unprofessional, and I believe through the litigation that was filed on my behalf and by myself directly, and on behalf of my wife, he seemed to not have competence in regards to Freedom of Information Act requirements and Open Meeting Act requirements. I think that his position has put the board in an awkward state because he occupied two distinct roles as HRLR Director, and also, and I may be misstating his exact title, but also as general legal counsel. So by virtue of those dual roles, he somewhat has hamstrung his own discipline and performance reviews, and I think that he's culpable and responsible for rendering legal counsel to allow that to occur, and I think that that was a direct conflict of interest. That concludes my public comments. Again, thank you to the board for remending the agenda to allow public comment. Thank you.
Okay, we have the name Galaxy S10 Plus. You have the floor.
Greg, can you hear me?
I can hear you guys if you're talking. Go ahead, sir.
Okay, sorry about that. I don't know why it was registered. My name is Ryan here. But I'm a township professional partner for this 50/20s. I just wanted to share some experiences that I've had, my dealings with Mr. Assorti. First of all, he seems to be missing a lot of employee files when he's in control of them. And one employee that's no longer working here that had a union issue. He's led me on pretty much a wild goose chase throughout Town Hall, in the basement, going through every file cabinet in the building, trying to find an employee file that he had locked up in his office. I know my personal file, and that of Dave Noack, who was Vice President of the local, were locked up in his office. We had no access to our own personnel files. We're the only two employees in the township at that time that didn't have access to their personnel files, and I don't know why. He dropped the ball on workers' comp case that we have involving a firefighter, which has caused months of delays in legal expenses for that firefighter, and he's still out of work. Had that process been followed through properly, he should have been back to work by now. I've had very unprofessional, very confrontational experiences with him during meetings, including a safety meeting during which he used the words, "You want to start World War III because it's done." I think everybody knows that. He's been very aggressive toward female employees in my experience in different meetings. He's been the architect of the firing of union board members, including myself and the Vice President, the director of Dean Obuchi, with the help of two very expensive outside attorneys, I might add, which cost the township tens of thousands of dollars. And he consistently drops the ball during day-to-day business matters as pretty much any important company to tell you. But thank you for your time.
Christie, that was the only two people that were raising their hands. I don't see anybody else.
All right, then will you close public comment, please?
Sure. Yes, thanks. Closing public comment, and we are going to move on to the next matter, which is the Louder Mill hearing. Ms. Meehan, will you assist me in this process?
Sure. First and foremost, board.
Ms. Meehan, this is trustee Bucino.
Yeah.
That I need to read that our board packed this stuff. I would like to say a statement right now.
Say again. Well, let's first get the meeting started.
Okay, well, I have a chance to talk.
Absolutely, sir. Absolutely, sir. I will guarantee and make sure that happens. All I want to do is just set, I want to set the parameters and then make sure that Ms. Bogus and Mr. Assorti, or Brian and their team, is online so we can move effectively. So the first thing I just wanted to say is this, that there's no public comment in this meeting, so please make sure that all of the individuals who may be attending the meetings are muted. And the first thing that I do want to ask when Mr. Assorti and Ms. Bogus, or Mr. Assorti and Brian come up and introduce themselves, we want to ask if they wish to go into closed session, or do they want this in public? They've already indicated they wish it to be public, but I would like us to make sure that we ask them that question so they have all of the rights that they are entitled to be. Thirdly, I would like the board to understand that while Mr. Assorti is presenting his evidence, the board is to remain quiet, the board is to pay attention, the board should not make any kind of disruptive comments or statements, or, you know, things that would be pejorative or anything of that nature. This is Mr. Assorti's opportunity to explain and to do based upon what he has. And at that point, let me first ask if Ms. Bogus, Brian, or Mr. Assorti are on the line. Kathleen?
This is IT. I think Mr. Assorti is, he was in the attendee pool here. There he is.
Okay, would you please?
Kathleen Bogus is showing up in the panel list.
Right. Would you please unmute both of those people, please?
Yeah. Okay, Mr. Assorti is unmuted, and Kathleen, she's already unmuted.
Hey, Kathleen. Kathleen, how are you?
I'm good, Greg. How are you?
Wonderful. Thank you for joining us. Mr. Assorti, I just wanted to confirm that you're on?
I'm here.
Wonderful, sir. Thank you very, very much. Mr. Assorti, as you know, once we start, you're going to have the floor, and we will not get into the way of anything that you wish to say, do, or need, but if at any time that you wish to ask questions of the board, you're welcome to do so. The board will not be asking you questions unless there is something that just needs clarification in that regard. Okay, sir?
Okay.
All right. With that said, Mr. Bucino, you wanted to make a statement, which I would think would be pretty irregular at this time. I'd rather you make it at the end of Mr. Assorti's presentation, because I don't think it's appropriate for the board to get into the way of Mr. Assorti's ability to provide his proofs, but it's your choice of what to do. You're a board trustee. I'm only a lawyer guiding you.
And Ms. Meehan, when I get done reading the statement, you'll understand why I think it needs to be done at the beginning.
Sure.
Okay. So, fellow board members, residents, when we took our oath of office, not only did we take an oath to support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the States, the oath included that we promised to faithfully discharge the duties of our office to the best of our ability. We, as board members, vowed to discharge our fiduciary duty owed to all members of the public. It is fiduciary duty to require, among other things, fair dealings and distance-ensured conduct. Breach of a board member's fiduciary duties can expose the township to significant liability. All of the members of this board have a fiduciary duty to protect the taxpayer's assets. Several criminal statutes impose criminal fines and imprisonment for willful neglect of duty. Never have our fiduciary duty been put to the test since I've been on this board because it has in its employee matter. The serious realities of legal exposure and potential financial impact to our taxpayers' funds has manifested itself by the amount of legal information that has been put in front of us by numerous attorneys, not only representing the township, but also Mr. Assorti and our insurance company. Even the attorneys are seeking other attorney's attention. Since the night of February 19th, the night we voted to find just cause and find appropriate discipline for just cause's termination, the legal information we received has escalated and intensified in emails, close sessions, and direct conversation with attorneys. Some of that information has been complex and includes potential significant monetary damages based on the results of this hearing. But the piece of information that surprised many of us is the fact that we have to vote again to reaffirm just cause and the discipline for just cause. That piece of information was reported to the board via township email on April 20th by Mr. Meehan. After that email, there was a whistleblower lawsuit filed by Mr. Assorti, in which he makes claims that has dealt with that there were fair dealings in the due process. I have a duty that I cannot neglect to make this board aware of additional information that was going to become public at some point, but needs to become public right now, now that Mr. Assorti is here. Information that will have implications on this process. During the month of March, I consulted with an attorney to present in documentation and communications that were in my possession that demonstrated behavior of our supervisor, our clerk, and our Parks and Recreation Director that I thought violated Michigan law. This behavior included misconduct of office, willful neglect of duty, and hindering and/or obstructing a public official and the discharge of their official duties. The misconduct related against Mr. Assorti and the progression of the Ethics Board. The actions that our witness took place in the days leading up to the discipline hearing to Mr. Assorti, and were all after he was placed on administrative leave. Mr. Assorti had no knowledge of these events. Upon reviewing the information, attorney suggested that the evidence strongly indicated the existence of a quid pro quo, the clerk blocking the appointment of the Ethics Board to protect Ms. Dunn in return for Ms. Dunn doing whatever is necessary to dismiss Mr. Assorti and their family, these federal statutes that were violated. Upon the attorney's advice, I contacted the U.S. Attorney General's Office, and was then referred to an agent from the FBI. I reported my concerns to the FBI, and forwarded the documents in early April, long before the lawsuit. After that first contact with the FBI, I was given information by another public official of this township about more behavior that was related to Mr. Assorti's situation just days before he was put on administrative leave. In researching this new information, I found documentation that seems to support another claim that our clerk used her knowledge of public records and colluded with a township resident to use those records as leverage against our supervisor to convince her to place Mr. Assorti on administrative leave. That resident spoke against Mr. Assorti in his pre-termination disciplinary hearing, and I questioned at that moment it was happening, why that was even allowed. I reported both of the episodes of behavior to the FBI. Before a whistleblower lawsuit was filed, these events are not found in his whistleblower lawsuit, but makes the claims of Mr. Assorti credible. And the details of his claim, I had no knowledge of. As a supervisor and clerk, never shared with the public, the board, or the media the nature of what they both had knowledge and self-reported. It is my duty to let this whole board know about this information, as we make decisions that could affect our township's assets tonight. Thank you.
Well, Mr. Bucino, I will tell you that you've gone outside the bounds of what the Louder Mill hearing process is about, which is peculiar, number one. Number two is, I would disagree with you that you first found out in April that you'd have to re-vote again. In fact, you were told when the first hearing occurred, you would have to vote again. You were then told in email, so maybe there is some disconnect in that process. But with that said, let's move on to the hearing. So Mr. Assorti, you have the table?
Okay, thank you. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
First, let me start by saying thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening. I'm confident that this board has been advised that the specific purpose of this hearing is to provide due process in the form of an initial check against erroneous factual findings and resulting discipline before either decision is final. The board and those listening will have to forgive me that I have doubts about that initial fairness of tonight's exercise. Please allow me to explain. Your counsel has advised us that he would assist in obtaining witnesses, but the alleged evaluations that supposedly form the basis of the confusing charges against me are inconceivably anonymous. All of our attempts, I'm sorry, was somebody talking to me?
No.
Okay. All of our attempts to match the names of the documents have been denied. How can we effectively confront and/or cross-examine as to even basic foundational information? Things like...
Mr. Assorti, let me stop you for a minute. Can everybody please put their mics on mute so that Mr. Assorti does not have to deal with the noise, please? Go ahead, sir.
Okay, thank you. How can we effectively confront and/or cross-examine as to even basic foundational information, such as, "Who are you? How often and in what manner have you interacted with me? What education, training, and/or experience do you have to make these statements?" These types of questions are just the beginning of confronting and examining any witness, yet I am being denied that basic right. There are even more specific relevant questions, such as, "Did anyone help you prepare this documentation or pressure you? Are you a member of the union that recently took part in negotiations across the table for me? Is your judgment biased?" These areas of inquiry are basic, but again, are being denied to me. Additionally, it appears that certain board members, despite their obligation to do otherwise, have already made a determination. Since February, I have been repeatedly referred to as the former and/or prior HR Director General Counsel. My name was immediately removed from the township directory after being placed on leave. Lawyers who were representing the township under my supervision have been contacted by Mr. Meehan's firm and told that his firm would be replacing them. How is that possible when I have not been terminated? Mr. Meehan conveyed to my counsel that the previous decisions of the board were based upon the opinion of a lawyer from Flint, Dean Yodas. Mr. Yodas never spoke to me in his investigation or informing his opinion. He did write, quote, "There does not appear to be any previous discipline of Mr. Assorti. Additionally, there does not appear to be any written employment policies and/or work rules that apply to non-union employees except for certain township standards and guidelines that don't seem applicable," unquote. Read this closely, as it is a confirmation that I am not now and never had been in violation of any recognized policies or rules, yet somehow I am to face discipline. Mr. Yodas chose to report to the board as a basis for his opinion, part of the following. Initially, there were three employees under Mr. Assorti's direct supervision, Cheryl Ann Arft, Kristen Orlando, Dawn Elkins. There are now two, as Ms. Elkins requested to be moved due to what she referred to as the toxic environment she was working in, and she is now in the engineering department. My response is the following. I am not aware of any such statement by Ms. Elkins, and such statement would be in contradiction of the facts which are the following. On April 15, 2019, over one year ago, Ms. Arft began a leave. Ms. Elkins was working in the HR department at that time and continued to do so after that date. In the normal course of business, it was discovered that Ms. Arft had filed a workers' compensation claim for herself on the same basis that she requested her leave. For a workers' compensation claim, the township is required to submit a employer report of injury form to the insurance carrier, MML. The HR Department Procedure Manual states that the department head is responsible for completing this form. However, in this case, Ms. Elkins filled out the form on April 16, 2019, and signed it as the authorized representative of the township, I'm sorry, and signed it as the authorized representative of the township. I know she had not cleared that with me or anyone else for that matter. Upon learning of this deviation from procedure, I met with the supervisor to discuss the matter and the legal concerns of the documentation. Ms. Dunn and I met with Ms. Elkins and her union representatives. We explained what we had found. Shortly after the meeting began, Ms. Elkins became somewhat emotional and indicated she needed to leave for the rest of the day. Ms. Dunn and I continued to meet with the union representative. Expressing disbelief in what had just occurred, the union representative asked for time to speak with Ms. Elkins. The following day, Ms. Elkins came to work and apologized to me and for her actions. Based on her apology, the supervisor and I agreed not to seek discipline. The supervisor later moved Ms. Elkins to the planning department, as it had been short-staffed and Ms. Elkins had relevant experience in this area. Mr. Yodas further reported, on April 15, 2019, again, over one year ago, another HR employee, Cheryl Ann Arft, filed a grievance claiming, among other things, that she was verbally attacked by Mr. Assorti and subject to a hostile work environment. In her request for relief, Ms. Arft sought to be freed from the hostile work conditions. Mr. Assorti had caused and wanted him to be required to attend anger management classes. Ms. Arft later went off work for approximately two months due to work-related stress, all of which she attributed to the actions of Mr. Assorti. My response is the following. Again, Mr. Yodas has grossly misled this board. Ms. Arft's grievance is dated April 18, 2019. The union brought the grievance in front of the entire board with TV cameras in tow and claiming to have an audio tape of the incident giving rise to the grievance. The union, however, refused to turn the recording over to the township unless it was first played at the meeting. Because the recording was not turned over at that time, the board agreed to have trustee Smith recommend three independent attorneys to investigate. Eventually, Mr. Craig Lang was chosen to investigate. I had no involvement whatsoever in the selection, but unlike Mr. Yodas, Mr. Lang did interview me. Mr. Lang submitted a complete report and an opinion in writing to the supervisor. He recommended denial of Ms. Arft's grievance and stated, quote, "One thing is clear. Mr. Assorti's reaction to Ms. Arft on April 15, 2019 did not violate the anti-discrimination policy nor the collective bargaining agreement. Rather, between the two, I find that his questions and reaction to the circumstance was initially more measured than Ms. Arft," unquote. This report, which exonerates me, apparently was never provided to the board. Also, in spite of Mr. Lang's report, Ms. Dunn reestablished... Also, in spite of Mr. Lang's report, Ms. Dunn reestablished Ms. Arf's leave bank at a substantial cost to the taxpayers. Mr. Yodas stated yet another inaccurate allegation. He wrote, on April 18, 2019, again, over one year ago, "A resignation letter was received by planning director expressing its concerns with the conquer and control atmosphere existing in town hall, with emphasis on the human resources department's intimidating environment which strives to defeat the employee rather than come to fair terms. He stated that valuable employees are still being mistreated and disrespected in a bullying My response is the following: If Mr. Yodas attempted an independent investigation at all or even interviewed me, he would have learned that Mr. Maher had informed a number of people that the reason he was leaving was because he needed better health care. His new full-time position at Washington Township was approved by the Washington Township Board earlier in April, before his infamous letter. Also prior to the letter and while the CBA was being negotiated, he approached me and asked me why some people in his bargaining unit... Excuse me. Some people in his bargaining unit asked me had better health care benefits than him. As was my duty, I indicated that he would have to ask his union representatives that question. At another time, at Pat's request, I met with him and his employees who had attendance and timeliness issues. These employees later complained to me how much time Mr. Maher actually was spent or did not spend at the township. When I addressed this with the supervisor, she told me to disregard it. I also discussed with Ms. Dunn that while working full-time for Macomb, Maher's firm, which had previously claimed to have closed, was doing substantial work for Washington Township. This is, of course, acceptable, but he listed his company's resident agent office as Macomb Township Hall. I made the supervisor aware of this legally risky practice, and she refused to act. Moreover, two planning commission members complained to me that Mr. Maher had apparently abandoned the completion of Macomb Township's master plan and that they had complained to Chairman Charlie Oliver about it. They were told that Mr. Oliver did not want to press Mr. Maher on the subject. When I conveyed this information to Ms. Dunn, she ordered me not to approach Mr. Maher with these concerns. I take special note of Mr. Maher's letter upon his exit, especially the term "conquer and control," which certainly is subject to many interpretations. His letter gives not a single example of what that means or to what incidents he is referring. He did not identify a single employee as being bullied or a single incident to back his statements. Such a statement could never rise to the level of admissible evidence and therefore should never have been accepted by Mr. Yodas as a basis for board action against my employment. If board members thought hard about it, you might uncover a reason, perhaps in published FBI reports, why Mr. Maher was given such wide latitude to abuse Township trust. Finally, Mr. Yodas presented to this board a version of... Excuse me. A version of the purchasing specialist's story. He wrote, also on April 18, 2019, "The purchasing specialist submitted a resignation letter while expressing to her department head that the way Mr. Assorti operates both the HR department and legal counsel is just wrong, and she cannot continue to watch it happen and no longer wishes to be part of it." My response is the following: Let me be crystal clear: No documentation or evidence exists or has been produced for such a statement. What is available is the purchasing specialist's letter of resignation, which contains nothing resembling that statement. Her letter unequivocally states, "I have offered a position that I could not decline." To be fair, the letter also states that she was concerned that she would not successfully complete her probationary period. This is relevant information, though it apparently escaped Mr. Yodas. I would have nothing to do with this as her probationary period would be evaluated by her direct supervisor, the finance director. Incidentally, as I know everyone is aware, the finance director reports directly to the clerk. Of course, a cursory review of court records shows that the purchasing specialist's husband had filed for divorce a week later, on the very same day she filed a counterclaim for divorce and immediately began a position in Golden, Colorado. Do you blame the finance director or the clerk for her leaving? I do not. And logic dictates that they would be more responsible than I. Now that my preliminary doubts have been explained, let me move on to the anonymous evaluations. Though my contract calls for yearly evaluations by the board, this support apparently felt them to be unnecessary. Yet, on February 11, 2020, Ms. Dunn emailed me a note with an attachment, "All performance evaluations completed by the management group." Nothing in my contract allows the management group to evaluate me. Ms. Dunn's email and attachment of February 11, 2020 was the first time I saw any document of this nature, yet they are dated January 10, 2020. Mr. Yodas's opinion states that nineteen employees responded to my performance evaluation, including each department head. What I received were nineteen numbered forms, nineteen numbered forms plus one marked duplicate. This number is inconsistent with the number of active ASME members. There is no information as to the instructions that were provided. Many of these forms only contain a check mark in boxes. I do not know who submitted each document, which limits my ability to understand up to what the individual is referring. The statements contained in these documents are so vague in general, unspecific as to time and unidentifying of any person, place, or circumstance, as to render them impossible for any reasonable person to understand, much less to respond. As to the other general permits in the anonymous evaluations, I believe it is important to note the realities of my job. As the township's attorney, I am tasked with several responsibilities at one time. Due to the nature of the township's business, each department identifies an importance level to their presented issues without necessarily understanding what issues are pending with other departments within the township. We do our best to prioritizing issues based on the information provided by the department. Many times, certain departments expect an immediate turnaround time, even after that department has had the issue for several weeks, without regard to other issues within the township. Based on my experience, all departments are provided with a response as quickly and usually quicker than they would receive if the township was using outside counsel. I discussed this prioritization with the supervisor on a regular basis, sometimes multiple times within a single day. I have effectively managed my budget since 2017. This includes dealing with line items of which I have no control, such as recruiting, hiring, onboarding costs associated with each department. The township financial documents will clearly show these numbers. As part of my job responsibilities, I am tasked with assisting department heads with issuing discipline. Many times, if not almost always, I am asked to take the lead by the department head because of their unwillingness to handle the discipline process. I understand this is my responsibility, and I also understand personal resentment associated with this type of activity is transferred to a person in my position, some of whom were then asked to review me. I have hired competent professionals in the performance of my job responsibilities. Notwithstanding suggestions to the contrary, I have not favored any specific lawyer or law firm, and in fact, have assigned cases to at least seven separate and distinct law firms. At no time was it ever discussed or anticipated that I would perform all of the work of the township. I have to prioritize the hiring of outside counsel on both time and cost perspective. The total cost for the department remains far less than previously spent on outside counsel. Each invoice is approved by the board of trustees. I have not hired any attorney without first consulting with the supervisor as to the individual's role and my expectation of associated costs. Records of my attendance and performance clearly show that I typically spend forty-five to fifty-plus hours per week working for the township. Flex time is granted to many employees within the township that are required to work outside of the township's 8:00 AM to 4:30 PM hours. My schedule was always discussed and approved by the supervisor. I have attempted to make several improvements and advances for my department. Since my hire, I've instituted many new processes, including some of the following which were not previously present at the township: a township promotional video for hiring purposes, digital online and open enrollment process, digital online job applications, hiring practices through new web-based job boards, Christmas party, and other camaraderie events, despite vocal opposition by certain department heads and employees. I have attempted to institute some of the following programs, which have not been accomplished due to resistance from a few employees, some of whom supposedly evaluated me, involved in the process: digitized employment files, document retention policy for electronically stored information, practices for the protection of electronic information in the event of litigation, attempted renegotiation of rights under insurance coverage regarding assignment of defense counsel. I submit that resentment of my job compensation is related, at least in part, to the contract negotiations with the management unit. However, if one were to calculate the cost to the township and value of lifetime medical care, which I do not have, my cost to the township is comparable with management compensation. My responsibilities are to the township as an entity. This means the taxpayers. I was not hired, and my job description does not require me to advocate on behalf of the employees against the best interest of the township. This is the most understood concept in my entire employment relationship. I'm sorry. This is the most misunderstood concept in my entire employment relationship. I am only aware of one suggestion of my improper treatment of an employee. That employee filed a grievance, and I have already addressed that matter. There is no evidence of any personal gain by hiring outside legal work as my job requires. It simply does not exist. For this board's consideration, there are two hundred-plus employees of Macomb Township. To review me, Ms. Dunn and others chose only the disgruntled employees represented by ASME, who had previously signed a letter supporting Mr. Maher's parting shots. A letter that came under immediate challenge in public media. How can anyone even suggest that this is fundamentally fair? What I have done this evening is respond to the limited charges, as unfounded, confusing, and biased as they are, because that is how the louder mill process works. What I have not done is even begin to scratch the surface of some of the issues that face the township. Issues like resistance to change of the vehicle policy because the changes may impact employees who use township vehicles to show her elected officials. Request to sign off on contracts with legally non-existing companies that contain potentially illegal provisions simply because the vendor is a friend of a township official. Refusal to address a computer program installed on an individual's workstation that gathers information from the township server, including voter information, and automatically transmits such information to a company in Toronto, Canada, simply based on the fear of the vengeance of those involved. That and more is for another time. I gave up a successful law practice to come to the township. When I was recruited, I saw an opportunity as a professional to assist with the development of this unique, evolving community, the process of which will someday be part of Michigan history. Call me naive, but I had no idea that many would see it so differently than I and see it only as a found treasure to pilfer for their own personal benefit. As this process began to unfold, I could think nothing more than the old Abraham Lincoln adage, "When you don't have the facts, argue the law. When you don't have the law, argue the facts." The township and the people that want to remove me have neither. There is no legal basis to proceed in this manner, and there are certainly no facts that would justify it either. The complaint that I filed in the Macomb County Circuit Court explains why I am here. That, too, is for another time. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity for this legally mandated louder mill hearing. I ask that the law is followed, and serious consideration is given to the unfairness of the previous actions of the board.
Mr. Assorti, thank you very much for your professional approach to this. I can't thank you enough for that. Ms. Bogus, do you have anything else, Mr. Assorti, you would like the board to know? Is there any documents or any other people that you may have on the line that would like to speak on your behalf, sir?
No, we have made... As we've communicated to you, Greg, and Mr. Assorti set forth in his statement the reasons why there's no...
Yep, understood. Understood, Kathleen. I just wanted to make sure, maybe something they have changed, and I want to make sure he has every opportunity, that's all. Ms. Bogus, do you wish to say anything for the board?
No, I think my client has spoken well for himself.
Wonderful. Thank you. Thank you both. All right, board, this is your opportunity at this point in time now to do what sometimes is called the deliberate. You can deliberate amongst yourselves in terms of what your thoughts about this, what you've heard, and whether it has caused you to rethink the position that you've previously taken or whether it has affirmed the position that you have taken. Ultimately, it will result in a person making a motion, and then a second, and then a discussion, or you can start the discussion and then make the motion. But the board, it's up to you to begin your discussion amongst yourselves. And again, because this is an open meeting, given the fact that Mr. Assorti required it to be public, we do not go into a closed session.
Mr. Mean, Mrs. Trustee Bussner, I got a question of you before the board deliberates.
Yes, sir.
If the board chose to take a path where it would allow Mr. Assorti to return to work, how does that impact the whistleblower case? Because that was not there in our first go-round.
Understood. And I would indicate that it will have some impact on the whistleblower case in that it resolves some of the damage issues, but not all. And given the good counsel that Mr. Assorti has, I believe that it probably will assist in a quick resolution for both the township and Mr. Assorti. At least, that's been my experience.
Thank you.
And when I say in my experience... Hang on for a minute, Charlie. When I say in my experience, I meant in my experience of working with Ms. Bogus in the past. We've been adversaries for quite some time in our careers. Go ahead, Charlie, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Ms. Mean, can we... Can you still go back to...
Yeah, Ms. Mian, can you still go back to our insurance carrier and how this was handled going forward?
I don't quite know what you mean, and we're kind of outside of what we're supposed to be doing in terms of evaluating whether or not what you've heard from Mr. Assorti today causes you to think that just cause has not been established, and that while you still may decide at some point in the future to engage in some disciplinary action, right now, you have to decide whether just cause exists for the termination. And I do not want to go too far afield at this point in time as it relates to the insurance carrier and what they're doing, because they are involved with the whistleblower, and they have hired separate counsel for that.
Okay. All right, fair enough.
So since most people don't seem to be talking, then I think maybe if we could start with someone making a motion, and then a second, and then, as you know, when you make a motion and then a second, there's discussion that they have on that motion. But we need to move this forward based upon what you've heard and what you've read in the prior materials that have been provided to you.
Okay, Ms. Mian, this is Charlie Oliver again. I would like to make a motion to reaffirm that just cause still exists.
There's a motion by Ms. Trustee Oliver to reaffirm that just cause still exists?
Support by Smith.
Support by Trustee Smith that just cause still exists. I'll call the roll call vote, Trustee Oliver.
No, 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 no. This is the opportunity for the board to discuss that motion. So, I would have you ask the board members if they wish to discuss anything about that motion.
Board members, do you wish to discuss anything about that motion?
Yes, I do. I want to know what facts Mr. Oliver is basing his motion on.
Well, we had our attorney write us a confidential statement, and if you read that, in a lot of it, we went through them evaluations, and people just can't make that up, okay? And for me to think that we have employees that took the time to do that, that carries a lot of weight. And then I take it a little farther and think to myself that employees, the way they talk in them evaluations, it'd be clear that we're probably setting ourselves up for lawsuits because we don't ask. That carried a lot of weight with me. So, some of the stuff that happened, that Mr. Assorti said before I got here, I can't speak on that, because I wasn't a trustee at the time. But I can tell Mr. Assorti, when it comes to meeting on the planning commission, that was not quite clear what he said, because that was only two members, and they might have asked you the question. And I was asking Patrick, and Patrick had a reason that he was having trouble getting that master plan going, and I felt I could work with him on getting it going, but in time, he ended up resigning for his reasons. And that would answer the master plan question. But other than that, this is what I see.
Madam Chair, if I may, excuse me, this is Nancy Nevers talking. Charlie, I didn't mean to interrupt your prose. Are you finished, sir?
Yeah.
Okay. I would just like to mention a couple things. First of all, Charlie, you just mentioned that people who anonymously evaluated Mr. Assorti, if he were to come back, that they would perhaps sue. And I would ask, if there were nineteen or twenty-one, I forget the exact number, they would all have to have their own personal lawyer. Now, they would have to fund that, and/or would their union fund that? Or would the township be liable for those costs? I would suggest that people might think twice about lawsuits under those circumstances. And I, when you said that people took a lot of time and wrote all of these things that were in a negative light about Mr. Assorti, to me, and I spent an hour and a half reading every single one, they all were relatively similar, with the same words, the same type comments, and so perhaps these were suggested words, and, you know, for emphasis, for value. And, does anybody understand, when your office is being gored, hence the union employees who might have had to look at healthcare actuaries in lieu of more money, right away, that would have been verboten, that was in no way, I was under the impression there was no way that that would be acceptable. Perhaps that influenced their assessment of Mr. Assorti. In my opinion, anybody who had problems with Mr. Assorti should have signed those evaluations. And I mentioned that to Janet at the time, anonymous words about somebody that they did not like meant nothing to me. That did not take courage at all. Thank you.
Madam Chair, this is Trustee Bostner.
Wait, wait, wait. Hold on. Can I respond to that?
Yeah, you can.
This is Charlie, can I respond to that? Okay, Nancy, here's something that I took in, I took very hard to, is when Mr. Maher resigned, in that meeting, that, I don't know the exact number, but there were multiple employees that were still employed, that took the courage to walk up to that podium, knowing that they could get retribution upon them, but they still took the courage to walk up to that podium and state how they've been being treated. That carries a lot of weight, because that takes a lot of courage to do that. So, yeah, and I read every one of them's statements, twice, and I don't believe there was similarities in them, like you're actually saying, that maybe someone was telling people how to fill them out. I just don't believe that. I believe that so much of that comes from people's hearts. And that's all I have to say on that matter.
All right, and I would like to rebut that. Mr. Oliver, you and I will have to agree to disagree on that. Thank you for your comment.
Madam Chair, Trustee Bostner, again.
Go ahead. I'm sorry, Tim.
No, I just want to say that, based on her statement, I can imagine that most of you understand that. I've talked to, I've got quite a lot of input from attorneys to understand this process. It is one-hundred percent absolutely true what people have come to the podium and say. And I want to make it clear that what I witnessed from Mr. Assorti was abrasiveness. I thought he was a bully at times. There were times he could be charming, and there were times where he was very, very aggressive. And sometimes, to be honest, you know, I wasn't sure how a board meeting was going to go, based on some of the things that, you know, some of the politics he was playing. But what I've learned is that, in our first go-around in February, and I'm still hearing it now, that we let a tremendous amount of personal animosity and personal bias come into this, and maybe institutional bias. And I was probably a little bit guilty of that. There was a time where people have used things that happened to me with Mr. Assorti, like in his first go-around to resident again, which I thought was highly unusual, that a resident got to have input at a disciplinary hearing. And you've got to give me credit, at the time it happened, I challenged that. As a teacher, as a teacher, I wouldn't want a resident that wasn't the parent of a student come up and make those comments about me. I don't think my union would appreciate it.
Well, let's get back to focusing on the evidence that's been presented.
And all that established just cause. We have used, we have used all that bias and personal animosity to adjust just cause, and that's what we're being asked to do here again shortly.
Well, you can only speak for yourself, sir, and I agree with that, you have that right. I just wanted to make sure we stay within the realm. If you believe that that material established just cause for you, then that's fine. I don't know that you can make the comment to others. But, look, and I don't want to restrict any board member's ability to speak, I just want to make sure we keep it within the realm of what's been presented, that's all. And you're welcome.
I know.
You got it, sir, thank you.
I just want to, this is Karen, I'd just like to make a statement. If this was so bad, why didn't anybody file any grievances against Mr. Assorti? No one has, and no one did.
This is Kristy Posey, I'd like to speak on behalf of that. I think, from what I've read and from what I've been told, employees were in fear of retaliation and bullying if they did file a grievance. We did have one employee file the grievance, and she feared to come back to work, and she stayed off work for quite some time. So, there was a grievance filed, but many have admitted that they were in fear of retaliation.
And after she came back, was there any retaliation? I was told that they had an agreement.
I can't speak on behalf of the employee. So, I'll just continue to, I'll affirm my decision was, based on my own experiences here as a board member, I found some of the information that was provided this evening to be disingenuous, uninformed, and clearly relying on innuendos and speculation. I reviewed the evaluations, which this board agreed upon, on how the evaluations were going to be conducted. It was agreed upon that we were going to do them anonymously, to allow employees to be honest and open without fear of retaliation. That's exactly how the evaluations were conducted. Also, Mr. Yodis' report was very extensive, and pointed out a lot of things that were disheartening. And I also feel that Mr. Assorti did not work with the board as a whole. And I do believe there is documentation and information to support that. So, we all have documentation and information on things that went on in this township, and however you want to word it, my goal has always been to do the right thing. I found that his professionalism was uncandidly rude, and I speak to the reasons that we indicated back in February. I mean, it's no secret this employment has been contentious since day one. And that's all I have to say.
This is Karen Goodhue again. We discussed in closed session about how different ways of how to do evaluations...
Karen, you can't discuss what heard in closed session, please.
There was a violate, it's already been out there. It was said in open, all right, I'll go back to open session. It was said in open session that we decided to have anonymous surveys. That was not decided in open session. And Ms. Dunn sent out an email afterward and said that she wanted to know if we sent out the survey and gave everybody a chance to look at it and see if they agreed to it. I went up to her office and told her that was not the way to do an evaluation, and I felt that was very unfair and unjust. I discussed it with her, I gave her another opinion of how to do it. I also know that Nancy Nevers has said several, a couple of times at the board meetings, that she talked to Ms. Dunn and suggested a way how to do an evaluation. And when we went in to read the evaluations, Ms. Dunn said to me, nobody gave her any help. She went with what Ms. Posey suggested to do the anonymous survey. So, it was not...
That's incorrect.
No, she said that, she said that when we went in there to read those surveys. She said she did not receive any help, she said she didn't receive any help from anyone. Ms. Posey was the only one that answered her on the survey.
That's exactly what she said, she did not say.
Okay.
Okay, so correct your statement and say it correctly.
I did, just now.
Good. Perfect.
Now, Madam Chair, if I may, I'm in a hundred percent agreement with what Ms. Goodhue said. I went to the supervisor's office, and sat down with her and explained how unfair I thought any anonymous evaluation was. I would have never in a hundred years ever agreed that that was the way to proceed. I told her, she said, "Well, you never helped me." I said, "Excuse me, please, but do you remember my coming to you and saying I had what I thought was a really good suggestion on how to evaluate anybody in the department, and that would be with goals and objectives? A person being evaluated would compose their goals for the following year." And then, that supervisor, and I mean that collectively, not just Janet, would look at those goals and decide whether those employees had fulfilled their own objective goals. Now, she said, "Yes, I do remember you saying that." So I said, "Please do not say I did not come to you to help with this evaluation." So, what I, there is no way that I would ever think that an anonymous evaluation by anybody or anybody could ever be fair. Thank you.
This is Clerk Posey, I'd like to ask a question of Trustee Nevers on that. Did you ever conspire with Mr. Assorti on how to readdress the idea of anonymous evaluations to lean more towards your goals and objectives?
And I will answer that. I remember discussing it in arbitration, when we were talking about trying to look at the step process that Mr. Kaye put into place, and that would have, I don't know how it was received, but in retrospect, why would any employee, union person, want to be judged by goals and objectives when they had union protection? So it probably was a false premise to mention it in there. I may have discussed that, I know he was in the room, so of course he knew that, and I remember saying it to Janet, and I probably said it to Karen as well. It seemed to me to be an unfair process. Though I'm not sure what else you are going to be looking at.
I'm asking if you had, if you coerced or you spoke with Mr. Assorti personally as to how you can change the process to be more objective in goals versus an anonymous evaluation.
I can tell you categorically I did not. It was a data con sleeve from the jump... The, it was a data con sleeve from the jump that that, I, I was shocked when Janet came up with that process quite a, quite a way before she actually came down with it. And, uh, categorically, no. It was something that I came up with in thinking of what happened when I was a Christ through employees.
Okay, guys, let's, Miss Posey, let's get ourselves back to what we're here to do. We're not here to do, to, um, expose, um, board members to bias and everything else. They, they're, everybody here has a right to vote, uh, and to some degree, everybody has some bias in some regard. The purpose here is, you heard the evidence from Mr. Assorti. You've read the evidence that was presented to you, uh, for the pre-termination. There's a motion on the table that's been seconded, uh, to affirm the just cause, uh, finding. And, uh, unless anybody has any other, um, issues that they wish to, uh, discuss about what they've heard, uh, we need to make that vote. But, you can go as long as you want. I just want you to stay within the bounds of what you're doing and not to be attacking each other, um, and trying to show bias.
Well, that happens. Madam Karen.
This is trustee Bussinow. I just had a question, Mr. Meehan. Can I at least explain why I voted the way I did the first time?
It doesn't, it doesn't do it. It doesn't, you already did that in the beginning, and it does nothing for the purpose of what you're here today. You're here today to determine whether there's just cause after you've heard it. Or you're not here.
Mr. Meehan, I did not explain why I voted the first time. I, I've talked about some, some events that are reported since then, and things that have been brought to me since. And I'm talking about that maybe at the meeting. There seems to be some kind of notion that we looked at the evidence, and we all agreed with every piece of evidence, and that's why we voted. And that is not true. I never, ever.
No one has ever said that, Mr. Bussinow, that every one of you who voted agreed upon any portions of the evidence, uh, briefly. That's not what you voted. You voted to find just cause, whatever, for whatever reason that you had. Now, you're being asked to determine, based upon what you've heard from Mr. Assorti, whether there is just cause, um, uh, still for you to do. That, that's it. We, we.
Correct, Mr. Meehan, but what's gonna happen to me as a public official? Because I represent residents. If I don't vote the same way, they're going to ask me why. And I think I have a right to explain that to the residents right now, things that have changed for me.
Well, I do think, I do think you have the right, when it comes time for the vote, to make your vote and tell the, tell the people why you vote, why you're voting that way.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay, thanks.
Madam Karen, this is trustee Smith. I just wanted to give my reasons why I seconded Mr. Oliver's motion to reaffirm. I based it strictly on, I didn't go out looking for other information after this meeting, or the first meeting that we had. I based it strictly on Mr. Yodis' legal opinion to the board, and I based it strictly on the, um, questionnaires from our employees. And as a lifelong civil servant of thirty-plus years working for the government, I believe these employees. And that's how I faced my decision. Thank you.
All right, um, everybody done? You ready for a, a roll, a, a roll call vote?
Yes. Yes. Trustee Oliver.
Yeah. Okay.
Trustee Oliver.
Uh, yes, I will. I, I wanna make my motion to reaffirm just cause.
You already did that, sir. Now, you're voting on it.
Okay. I'm voting yes on it.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Bussinow?
No.
Trustee Nevers?
No.
Treasurer Goodhue?
No.
Clerk Posey, yes. Supervisor Dunn, not here. It's a tie. Motion fails.
Okay. Um, anybody wanna make a different motion?
I make a motion that there is no just cause for firing. I'll support that.
Motion by Treasurer Goodhue that there is not a just cause for firing, supported by trustee Nevers. I'll call the roll. Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Bussinow?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
No.
Trustee Smith?
No.
Clerk Posey, no. It's a tie motion. It fails.
Okay. Um, is there, uh, any other motions that the, uh, the board wishes to make?
No, for me. No, no.
This is trustee Bussinow. Can we make a motion about moving forward with Mr. Assorti?
Well, um, one of the things that I looked at is, unfortunately, uh, your township does not have a set of bylaws. Um, I don't know why that's the case, or, or maybe I couldn't find them, but I've asked for quite a while. Um, usually your bylaw. Say again, sir?
Is it 'cause of where General Township versus City? I'm not sure.
Sometimes, sometimes that's the reason, sir. But, um, e, even general townships sometimes have them for, for the reason being that this particular, um, issue, uh, needs to get resolved. But, um, without that being said, um, the, uh, finding of, of just cause, uh, for wrongful conduct that would rise to the level of termination has failed. Uh, because there's been no affirmative vote, uh, on it. And, uh, as, as a result of that, um, I will, um, the, the, I'm gonna do some quick research on this issue, and I will instruct the board, uh, as to what that means. That probably means that based upon the fact that, uh, there was no affirmative vote, uh, to find just cause, uh, that it fails, and Mr. Assorti, uh, is back into his employment, uh, with the township. Uh, and, uh, of course, um, I will work with him to make sure everything's transferred over. But, I, I will need to do some quick research tomorrow morning, uh, to see how that works out.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, those of you who may know, um, I had hoped to have a, I'd hoped to have that research done, but I had, um, some surgery and, uh, on my back, and I am, uh, just out of that for a day and a half. And, uh, I'll jump on that issue, uh, immediately for you. But, I will tell you that my, my reaction and belief is, um, that motion failed, uh, and therefore, since this is the final determination, a by it failing, um, then there is no finding of just cause and no termination. And Mr. Assorti's entitled to, um, uh, put himself back into his position. And I would just ask Ms. Bogus if I would have until tomorrow around five to communicate with you, um, confirmation of that result?
Um, that's fine. And are you saying Mr. Assorti should not report to work tomorrow?
Yes, I would ask if he would just give me the time to make sure that I can, um, uh, provide that direction for the board, and then, um, th, then Mr. Assorti can begin coming back, I guess, on Friday, and, um, I can work with him then to, um, start the transfer over of the files so that, uh, he can begin his process. The good news for him is we're all up to speed on everything. And, um, so I'll let you know at five o'clock tomorrow, uh, Ms. Bogus. And, and the board, like I said, um, all the research that I have done, all the case law that I've looked at says when the motion for just cause, uh, in termination fails, like it has, uh, then it's as though it didn't happen, uh, and therefore, he would be entitled to the return to his work. And I will do a final. I'm sorry, wait.
This is, uh, Clerk Posey, other question. So, if just cause, uh, can't be proven that it exists, but it also wasn't proven that it did not exist?
Nope, nope, that, it doesn't work that way. The affirmative motion, um, uh, in, in this process of a lauderdale hearing is for there to be a finding of wrongful conduct that rises to the level of just cause and, um, termination. And this board, after hearing the evidence from Mr. Assorti, um, has, uh, changed, uh, i- its vote to a three-three, which means there is no finding of just cause and wrongful conduct that would rise to the level of termination. And at tha, as a result of that, uh, he is, should not be precluded from, uh, being put back into his position as both the HR and as the, uh, legal counsel. Now, again, I'm gonna check a few more cases on it, but I'm telling you that's what the law, uh, holds at this point in time from my understanding.
This is Karen Goodhue. That has been past, past practice.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Meehan. This is Nancy Nevers.
All right, so, at this point in time, um, we, we should move into the final phase of this board meeting, which either is open, uh, I mean, we, we should close this lauderdale hearing with a motion to close it, and then we should then do our, uh, public, uh, comment at the end of the meeting and, and, uh, do a motion to close.
Mr. Meehan, Charlie Oliver, can, can we still make a statement? So, you want us to close it?
I would like you to make a statement, if you don't mind, um, at your public comment or when you board members get to speak, you know?
Fair enough. Fair enough.
I'll entertain a motion to close the public, or to close the lauderdale hearing.
I will make that motion, Karen Goodhue.
And I will support that, Nancy Nevers.
Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
Trust, trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Bussinow?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. And, uh, this, that, uh, lauderdale hearing.
Oliver, yeah.
Trustee Oliver, I apologize.
Yep, no worries.
All right, board, I'm gonna take a, a break, um, and, and get off the line. I mean, where I'd like you to go next is public comment in general, and then your, your board comments at the end, and then close the meeting. Um, but I will, I will jump back on as soon as I can. I just have some particular things I have to do with regard to, uh, my medical issue, um, in terms of some pills and other things I need to do, okay?
Mm-huh.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll turn, I'll, I'll now open up the, um, public comments. If, uh, Ryan could assist with that again. If you'd like to speak, you can raise your hand from your computer, or you can press star nine.
I did, I didn't hear everything you said. Could you just repeat that?
Yes, I'm, I'm opening, the next item on the agenda is public comments. Um, opening up for public comments. If you wish to speak, you can raise your hand on your, uh, computer device, or you can hit star nine. And, uh, the IT department will assist you with that.
Okay, so we have, uh, phone number ending in six eight four three. You have the floor.
Hello, this is Kathy Western. Can you hear me? Yes, I can hear you.
Yes, we hear Kathy.
Uh, thank you very much. Um, my comments are specifically directed to trustee Nancy Nevers. Um, Ms. Nevers, in May of two thousand seventeen, it was brought before the board to restore or remain in, um, a, as rejected by the Macomb County Circuit Court, the contract with Thomas Assorti. You came into that meeting claiming you had not heard of Judge Drazinski's decision, uh, that negated his contract. And you sat there with famed amazement that that had happened. Nonetheless, you were armed to the teeth with multiple motions that permitted the vote or the contract to be reinstated. Now, I ask you, had you not consulted with Thomas Assorti ahead of time as to the exact wording of those motions? And had you not known to reenact the actions of the meeting that was decided by Judge Drazinski to have been inappropriate and illegal in violation of OMA? How was it, Nancy Nevers? Please explain to the citizens of Macomb Township how you knew to show up at that board meeting with your fist full of motions and your head full of steam? It seems like you're still defending him. Maybe you'll tell us why. Thank you. That concludes my comments.
Phone number ending in one one two zero. You have the floor.
Yes, this is resident and trustee candidate, John Parkinson. Can you folks hear me?
Yes.
Hello? Okay, perfect. Um, my address is on file at clerk's office. While I'm grateful for Mr. Meehan's work on this case, it is in my opinion that Mr. Meehan is not looking out for the township or its residents, rather than he seems to be looking out personally for Janet Dunn and Clerk Posey. Clearly, his response to trustee Bussinow earlier tonight showed this. At this time, as a resident and a trustee candidate for our great township, I request the board look for a more suitable and non-biased attorney to represent us as a whole as soon as possible. Thank you. I yield to the floor.
Okay. Uh, next we move on to Mr. Frank Cusmano. Go ahead.
Mr. Frank Cusmano? Frank Cusmano, I'm sorry, I was muted. Um, again, Frank Cusmano, one six one eight eight Jenny Drive. Well, there's so much to unpack here. Let's begin with the contract, which is the wellspring from which all this trouble flowed. It violated the OMA. This is a sign of incompetence. And when it comes to OMA and the, the legal advice that was given by Mr. Assorti exposed the township to litigation by Mr. Graybough, which resulted in the reversal. And everyone just, hear no evil, see no evil, speak no evil of what's going on. But I would submit in advance that this is what occurs when political hacks get into office. Dino Bucci's bare-knuckle politics pretty much made it, inhibited people of, you know, conscience and integrity and character from running for office. And what was left is a bunch of, um, supplicants who would look for leadership where they could find them. Who was supposed to supervise Assorti? Why wasn't there, one of the issues he raised was, why wasn't there a, um, a review of him? I would suggest, 'cause he didn't want a review. And because he didn't initiate the review and pull the puppet strings the way that they had fallen after Dino Bucci got indicted, that, that that's what occurred. Janet Dunn, the supervisor, again, where was she? Where was the treasurer? When all these things are occurring, through Treasurer Goodhue's right, where's the grievances by the employees? But where is Mr. Assorti's grievances? Where's Mr. Assorti's complaints? Where are his? 'Cause he's playing along. He's going along with it. I will just give a, a shout out to trustee Bussinow, who would have known many of these issues, but he was fighting every aspect of corruption in the township. And, uh, again, Assorti did nothing, and it makes Supervisor Dunn appear all the more so weak and incompetent. He says that Dunn ordered me not to, uh, to do something. I would submit that that is not an accurate description of the relationship between Ms. Dunn and Assorti. Assorti does not say that he did not disclose, does not say why he didn't disclose all this. I would submit, and others have postulated, that Assorti was running the township. When I went to serve papers on Ms. Dunn, she would not sign for the papers unless Mr. Assorti was looking over her shoulder and nodding his head, you know, as if she was an automaton, a puppet. So, she signed for the papers, which is a routine matter, you know, you sign for acknowledgement of service. This just should drive home to the fact, to those of the residents and anyone who can hear my voice, that elections do matter. Uh, reviews, I would submit, were not necessary for Mr. Assorti because he pretty much was running the. running the show and everything was being left to just basically spin out the way that it wanted to. Now, he did get some resistance from the collective bargaining units, but who, this is the craziness of the madhouse, who's running the asylum? You've got, everyone feared, fearing of retaliation and claiming fear of retaliation and no one's standing up with the exception of Tim Bussenow and doing the right thing. And Tim Bussenow is even trying to do the right thing and be fair and intellectually honest right now in his view of the state of the evidence against Mr. Assorti, but he'll never get any kudos or reward for that. It's time for the township to get serious, we have to roll up our sleeves. Mr. Assorti was claiming that he didn't farm out work, but when I had to pay a traffic ticket or negotiate a traffic ticket, it wasn't Mr. Assorti who was there, there was a firm that was hired with him, which by the contract again, was completely giving him discretion to hire, even though it's outside of ordinary budgetary process. Mr. Bussenow brought that up one session and one meeting as well. And what about whether or not these provisions in his contract are illegal themselves? You know, Mark Graybough raised the issue of for just cause contract with an attorney is limiting future board's ability to terminate an attorney-client relationship. That should be explored. And I was waiting for a motion for a process by which Mr. Assorti can be accurately reviewed and to be fair to Mr. Assorti, and that's what everyone should be striving for, is fairness. The employees of the township deserve fairness in their evaluations of what they do, they deserve to be treated fairly and with respect and with dignity. And Mr. Assorti deserves the same, but you know, he hasn't shown it and he didn't get it and now we're filled with conspiracy theories and biases and he says all the telltale signs of incompetence, petty grievances and manipulations. The goal is not to get the work done in an efficient way, it's for the big enchilada, which is the honey pot, which is the township government. Trustee Nevers says she has a problem with unsighted employee evaluations. Where was that comment and discussion when all this was occurring, you know, rather than at this point in time? So where are we at now? Mr. Assorti comes back to work and continues to be in a toxic work environment, there's no mechanism to review his work and his character and his at work and the way he presents himself and the culture-
Clerk Posey, are we doing the three-minute rule?
Yeah, I was just going to give him a heads up that he needs to wrap it up.
Thank you. I wanted to read the poem, "The Crooked Man," there was a crooked man that ultimately lives in a crooked house. I think that that is apropos, I'm not saying Mr. Assorti's crooked, but I'm saying there's a crooked house in Macomb Township and it needs to be righted and the ship of fools needs to sail on with-
Thank you, Mr. Cusamano.
Thank you and-
Okay, we have Mr. Tom Sople, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen of the board. Tom Sople and my address is on file at the clerk's office. We're talking about a lot of different things in these comments today and I'm gonna try to keep my comments specific to just cause. And I think anyone that's worked in any type of union environment before could relate to this and I would think the employees of this township should be able to relate to this because it's the same standard, the same standard to get rid of an employee or terminate an employee is the same in a just cause contract, progressive discipline, all those types of things. And in no circumstance that I could think of, anywhere that I've seen and working with a multitude of different unions, that employee feedback in a review could be used to terminate another employee. Just imagine if that was a police officer, a fireman, a UAW worker and asking employees that the managers, okay, on the other side of the table were able to just write employee reviews and say, "That's cause to get rid of an employee." You never would hear that and that's how you gotta relate to this situation. You gotta take the personality out, the communication style out, a lot of those other things we talked about today, some of them I may agree with. You gotta take all of that out and base it just only in just cause. So when I hear trustee Smith say her thirty years of working in the court and other people like Mr. Oliver saying in their experience, "I can't believe these people made these things up." Maybe they did, maybe they didn't, maybe it's the truth, but there's nothing in his contract that says you could use a review to terminate him. It's not in his contract and that's all you have. And if the contract is written poorly, it goes to the employee's advantage. So just because it says there's supposed to be a review, Janet Dunn needs to be held accountable for not having that review. That's a whole nother path, okay? The review should be done, it wasn't done, the results of the review don't matter, it cannot be used to terminate an employee for cause and that's what everybody's confused about. You can't just fill out surveys, you can't just write letters about an employee, whether they're good or bad, and use that as evidence for cause. No court, no judge, no jury is not gonna stand up. So that's really, all these other things people are talking about are politics and aren't even material to what's going on here. There's clearly no cause, clearly no cause. Thank you very much.
We have Bee, you have the floor.
Hello, this is Denise Aquino, is that what you just called out?
Yes.
Um, I, I just wanted to make, my address is one six nine four zero, Francesca Court, Macomb Township. I've been a resident of this community for forty years and our board has continued to be some, I would say, they put themselves against each other or they are controlled by, were controlled by a single person. But what concerns me, I agree with what has been said, Mr. Assorti, unfortunately, even though I do think he has, is not, has the right personality to be in a role that he can, I feel that he is rooted to the township's citizens and perhaps to the employees, that is all experience, of course, of him, other than what I've seen at meetings. But I will say that I think the board did the right thing to him, I think he did, you know, changing your vote for just cause was the right thing to do. My biggest concern at this point, I agree with Tom and I agree with Frank and what they've said, is that he comes back to work. So what is the process? What is, how are, is he going to be, how are we going to be, you know, he's going to adjust and how, what's gonna change so that he can be evaluated effectively? Who's gonna set up that process? Who's going to advise and assist our board members? Is Miss Dunn still going to be in complete control of supervising him? All of those things didn't seem to work in the past, so how will it change now? That is my question. And I think that Miss Dunn obviously is not competent to be the supervisor of our township. So anyway, but I agree with the actions of the board this evening, but I am concerned moving forward, how things will change in terms of managing Mr. Assorti. Thank you.
Okay, Christie, with no one else.
Okay, at this time, I will then close public comments. I will open it up to any of the board members that wish to speak.
Yes, Madam Chair, I would like to, I have a comment for Ms. Western. First of all, I don't wanna get into a die of tribe or anything like that, but regarding Judge Drazinski, I have two words, judge shopping. The next thing, because of my background, I'm very, very attuned to injustice when I see it, because injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere, I wish that were my quote, but I feel I always must speak up and I always come off passionate. And Mr. Cusamano, I'd like to address your question to me. I can tell you, I did address to Janet the unfairness in the process and as a matter of fact, I believe I even said, "Where in the world would you have ever come up with an evaluation of an employee by all of the other employees in the township and have it anonymous?" Just the fact that someone was evaluated by everybody and he was the only one that that was handled is wrong. And I did address it, Mr. Cusamano, I just didn't do it and open it. Thank you.
This is trustee Bussenow, I'm reading through my comments brief because I read a long comment earlier. I just think it's important for everybody to know that some of the things I mentioned have been taking place over the course of many, 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 many weeks, long before Mr. Assorti filed his whistleblower lawsuit. I've talked to many, many, many people and like I said, many attorneys, I've talked into the FBI. I don't take anything that I read lightly. I want politics to get out of this township on that type of level and I know residents may have some questions and that's okay, it's America, it's freedom of speech, I may or may not understand exactly everything I read. I would advise out of courtesy, anybody that I did mention in that, before they respond to it, just be careful, you know, you might wanna get an attorney and talk first so you don't incriminate yourself, because I don't take lightly what I've had to do over the last five or six weeks. Thank you.
Yes.
Mrs. Karen.
Trustee Al.
Go ahead, Charlie.
I just wanna say why I still stayed with my convictions of the just cause and it's because of the recommendation from the attorney audit and again, them employees, them employees mean a lot. They are the people that take care of our community, they're the ones that are at three o'clock in the morning, fixing the water main, they're the ones at three o'clock in the morning, is that an accident scene? Them are the ones that are, that are running, that are taking care of this community, the residents of this community. And if nobody stands behind them and supports them, then we're no good for nothing. So that's all I got to say.
This is Karen Goodhue. I just wanna thank Tim for all of his research that he did, that is the best thing to do as a trustee, to get all the facts. And I also want to thank Mr. Sople because he was right on with his comments this evening and that's how I make my decision. Thank you.
Any other trustees wish to speak? Well, I'll conclude the meeting with my comments. I would just like to say that it has been extremely challenging in these last three years. The agreement that started this whole thing, there's a few of us, board members, that were adamantly against this for these specific reasons. I believe it was written specifically to put us in a position like that, this, so that if the performance didn't add up, that there would be a lawsuit at stake, that it would be very difficult for us to win it. So I believe that this has all been premeditated, it's been set up. I don't agree with any of the things that have been indicated tonight, I have already indicated that in my last statement, based on the complaint that was filed and there's always documents and evidence for everybody. So just keep that in mind and I look forward to justice prevailing and that's all I have to say. If anybody has anything else, I will, I'll look for a motion for adjournment.
I'll make that motion, Madam Chair. This is Nancy Nevers.
Okay, do I support? Support, Karen Goodhue.
Supported by Karen, so you have a motion to adjourn by trustee Nevers, supported by Karen Goodhue, Treasurer Goodhue. Trustee Bussenow?
Yes.
Don't you call me.
Oh, I'm sorry, trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee, or Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
Trustee Bussenow?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
And Clerk Posey?
Yes.
This meeting is adjourned.